Thank you everyone for their attendance. We will start with the invocation by the Father John Manuel of Saint Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church. Father Manuel will come forward, everyone stand, and after the invocation remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Father, thank you for being with us.
Good morning. David. Our heavenly Lord, you made all that exists, and for the love of your creation we praise your holy name. You also gave us as human beings the genius to create cities and the sensibility to govern them with wisdom. Thus we ask, O Lord, that for the blessed council of this great city of Virginia Beach, you would grant the members here present your guidance and an eye for justice and compassion. Help each member to be an individual of good conscience, a faithful leader of the public trust, a person for whom you would enthusiastically say, "Well done, thou good and faithful public servant." May your Holy Spirit shine upon this city council, leading them on to do good works and to create peace and prosperity in this place, for we give praise and glory to your holy name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Father, for coming down. We appreciate it very much. We have a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Your Honor, all members of the present--
Do you have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the informal session since May 17, 2016?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call for the question, please.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
If I could have Gino come forward from the Alzheimer's Association of Southeastern Virginia. It's always good to have you here, and I want you to know that Shannon has us decked out.
Thank you.
Not like you, though. Not like you.
Where is a pleasure for me to read this resolution. Whereas the health and safety of all citizens of Virginia Beach is important to the happiness, prosperity, and well-being of our cities, families, communities, and economy, whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive brain disorder that slowly deteriorates brain cells, affecting one's reasoning skills and abilities to perform simple tasks, ultimately leading to memory loss. Whereas Alzheimer's cases in Virginia are expected to increase 35.7 percent from 140,000 in 2010 to about 190,000 in 2025. Whereas during the month of June, people across the Commonwealth take part in the longest day, thelongesday.als.org, to raise awareness and support research and care for Alzheimer's patients. Whereas further research for Alzheimer's disease is critical, as it is only the cause of death among the top 10 causes in the United States that currently cannot be prevented, cured, or even slowed. Whereas caregivers and family members are crucial in maintaining a healthy quality of life for those battling Alzheimer's. Whereas it is imperative that Alzheimer's patients receive early diagnosis and have access to quality, affordable care to ensure that further research of this disease continues. Now therefore, I, William D. Sessoms, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, do hereby call upon our citizens to join me and members of city council observing June 2016 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, and this is signed by all members of the city council. And I'd like to present it to you if I may.
Yes.
And thank you so much for everything you've done. You've been doing this for a number of years. We appreciate everything you're doing to address this disease.
Thank you all. Very much appreciated. And the end of Alzheimer's truly starts with us, and by wearing purple we really show those individuals in Virginia Beach and in the entire state of Virginia that there is a community of support for them, and really that the legacy is that we will end Alzheimer's. So thank you for being part of that legacy, and thank you for that community support. And most importantly, if you know of anyone who needs assistance, who might be journeying this disease and feel alone, please reach out to us because we're here to help them. So thank you so much for this. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming down, and we thank you again for everything you've done. I open a public hearing on the Indian River Road and Providence Road intersection improvements.
No speakers, Your Honor.
The franchise agreement for the 5K race series on the boardwalk.
No speakers, Your Honor.
I'll turn it over to the consent agenda there. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval under the consent agenda, first under ordinances and resolutions. Item J1, which is an ordinance to authorize the acquisition of property and fee simple for right-of-way, Ray, Indian River Road, Providence Road intersection improvements by agreement or condemnation. Item 2, which is an ordinance to grant a franchise agreement with J&amp;A Racing Foundation, Inc., Ray, 5K race series on the boardwalk. And Madam Clerk, please note that the mayor is abstaining on that item.
Yes, Your Honor.
Item 3 was a resolution to establish an ad hoc committee, Ray, assistant assist residents with paying city service bills. Item 4, ordinance to accept and appropriate $15,000 resulting from the 9th Annual Virginia Beach Business Appreciation Charity Golf Classic and Networking Reception, A, Children's Hospital, King's Daughters Health Center and Urgent Care, B, the Entrepreneurship and Business Academy at Kempsville High School, and C, the Sisters Cities Association of Virginia Beach. Item 5, which is an ordinance to authorize city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement between the city and Kempsville Borough Boys Baseball, Inc., Ray, repairs to the sculpture. Item 6, ordinance to modify and extend the date for satisfying conditions, Ray, the closing apportion of an unimproved right-of-way known as Circle Lane. Item 7, ordinance to establish a capital project correction center, generator replacement grant, and accept, appropriate, and transfer of the grant, Ray, replacement of a generator at the correction center. Item 8, which is ordinance is Ray Sheriff's Office, A, appropriate and transfer $988,125, Ray, additional medical contract expenses and annual sick leave payouts, B, authorize a part-time position, Ray, assist in workload management. Clerk, please note that Mr. Moss is voting no on item 8B.
Yes, Your Honor.
Item 9, an ordinance, Ray, Department of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation, A, transfer of $172,697 within the fiscal year 2016-2017 operating budget, and B, authorize full-time equivalent positions. The clerk would please note that Mr. Moss is voting no on both 9A and B.
Thank you.
Open a public hearing for planning?
Under planning for consent, item K1, which is Decor LLC in the Centerville District for approval. Item 2, the application of Ocean Rental Properties LLC in the Beach District for approval. Item 3, the application of Beach Borough Development LLC in the Beach District for approval. And the clerk would please note that Mayor Sessoms is abstaining on that item.
Yes, Your Honor.
Item 4 is the application of King Farms LLC, Pamela and Stephen Gray in the Princess Anne District. Clerk, would please note that Mr. Davenport is abstaining on that item.
Yes, Your Honor.
Item 5, the application of Phil Bonifat in the Princess Anne District. Item 6 is the, well, no. Item 7 is Farmhouse--
We're going to--
We're pulling item 6.
No, we're deferring it.
All right.
We have a speaker.
We have a speaker.
Oh, okay. Got it.
He did not check in now.
Oh, he did not?
Okay, we'll defer. No one's speaking.
For deferral to July the 12th, the application of Direct Independence Group LLC. Item 7, Farmhouse LLC application. Item 7A and B in the Kempsville District. Item 9, application of Leonard Aluminum Buildings, Inc., Fay W. Forbes at L. in the Centerville District. Item 10, application of Joseph J. Arzillo in the Rose Hall District. Item 11 is the application of Brenton Rogers Act B Partners in the Lynn Haven District. And item 12, the application of city Virginia Beach ordinances to amend section 1.5 site plan ordinance, Ray, definition of a dwelling unit, and B, ordinance to amend sections 2 or 3B 5 and 204D of the city ordinance, Ray, illumination on to adjacent parcels, and that's deferral for 30 days. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
If you'd made on item number 11 my abstention.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor is abstaining on item 11.
And it's my understanding that 12A was the 30-day deferral and 12B was to be approved. Is that correct?
Speaker, that was my abstention.
All right.
And do you, Madam Clerk, you have the mayor abstaining on item 3. Is that correct?
I have him abstaining on J2, K3, 6, 8, and 11.
Fine.
And Mr. Davenport on K4, and a nay vote from Mr. Moss on 8B, 9B. And Mrs. Henley, your nay is being removed by the deferral, right?
I think my nay was on 9A and B, if I remember correctly. Both.
What did you say, Mr. Moss?
I think it was A and B, both parts of 9.
Okay. Mr. Moss's was 8B, no, and 9A and B, no, and I will come to you in a moment.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, that's the motion. Is there any, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
A vote of 11 to 0 noting the abstentions and the nay vote. You have approved the items read by the vice mayor.
Mr. Moss.
Yes, less than 30 days. On May 12th, it was a Tuesday, the city council adopted the budget. So less than 30 days since we've adopted the budget, and before the budget even becomes effective, we are making two changes to increase the number of people who are positions that are permanently funded on the city's payroll. When you look at the narrative accompanying that, there's no reason why the events and the courses of action that brought that to our knowledge now wasn't available to the city manager at the time. Now, it's interesting that in itself, increasing positional growth before the budget's even in effect, I think, is just sloppy, and we shouldn't reward sloppiness. So I'm voting against that on principle. But secondly, we've also identified money to transfer within the budget that we voted to spend on something else, and all of a sudden, before the budget's even adopted, there's $172,000 that probably wasn't as important as we thought, that we could move to three new positions being created. But there was no real analysis on the opportunity cost of what we weren't going to get when we received the justification in our packet, and it didn't get the kind of review that I thought it should inquire. But just so people know, that those positions, just by, it's important when you establish new positions, because that's someone that you, when you fill it, it's an obligation forever. But our benefit cost is 42 percent. After you pay the direct salary, the benefit cost to you, the taxpayer, is 42 percent. So every time we add a position, it's a liability to you. We have 7,000 positions. First of all, it's hard to believe that out of 7,000 positions, that these are more important than this, but we didn't do that kind of analysis. Everything here is always on top of what we have, and I think you as taxpayers deserve, should expect more from us before we impose upon you additional liabilities. And these things are not getting the critique and the examination that you should expect and that you deserve, and that's why I voted no.
I cannot let you make a comment about the staff along those lines, John, without some sort of response.
Well, please do.
You know, I respectfully disagree with you, and I am truly amazed as to what they're trying to do in Andy Friedman's department in trying to address the homeless issue in our city, and we have made some great headways. And as you well know, that funding is not any additional funding for those projects.
I acknowledge--
We had volunteer organizations that were being compensated for that, and they have said they cannot do it anymore, mainly because they probably can't afford to do it at that price anymore. And as such, I believe the city has stepped in and used the same amount of funds to provide the same type of services, and hopefully even better. I do not, you know, I respect where you come from, but I do think we cannot sit back and degrade what I think a group of people are really trying to do a very good job and have made a huge mark in addressing the homeless issue in our city. And again, please, and I appreciate your acknowledging, this money's coming basically from the same pot of money used for the same purpose.
Yes, this was my point. I didn't challenge and talk to the output that is achieved by the resources. My point is that in 30 days, that much didn't change since May the 12th, and this should have been dealt with at the time the budget was dealt with, and we should be talking about all those things. And we could move three FTEs from some other place in the city and not have a net increase of FTEs overall, and that's not in this analysis. So my issue was twofold. The timing of, because of the budget. Secondly, there was no assessment that we had to have a net increase of three FTEs versus finding something that was a lower priority than dealing with the homeless, which I'm certain that none of that 7,000 positions there are, and we could have a zero net sum not only on money, but on the number of FTEs in the budget, and that's not what we were presented, and that's not the analysis we received.
And we'll agree to disagree.
We will.
Okay, very good.
And I'll agree with you.
Well, thank you.
If I could, because, you know, this is, this is, it's important that the public understands that we do understand what we're doing, and in reading about the, you know, the change that would have to be made in order to keep the winter shelter program going for another year, as well as these other programs that, as the mayor has said, that certain volunteer organizations had been filling, the fact that they have changed and we can't just let it drop. And, you know, we have to deal with it, and I think we have to deal with it now, because now is when, you know, all of this has come about. But I think it's also very timely, maybe, that we do address these things in a more permanent fashion, because we're moving forward with the resource center that I hope will help to resolve so much of this anyway. And so I agree that this is something that, you know, everything doesn't always hit the deadlines that the General Assembly has set for us to get a budget or to adopt it and so forth. We have to be flexible, and I certainly, in order to make sure that we keep these programs going, think this is the right thing to do.
I'll move now back to planning. This item is Virginia Beach Travel Soccer Colonial Self-Storage LP. This was going to be on the consent agenda, but we heard, I heard we had someone to speak in again. Let's let them speak first, please.
Linda Russell. Are you representing this?
Yeah, I'm going to have the opposition first, please.
Linda Russell. Hello, I'm Linda Russell, I guess all of y'all know, and welcome. I've sent you many things, and you're, sometimes you say, Linda, you sent me too much. I can only answer two of these. I think now you have to answer them all, don't you? Thank you so much for that. And being mayor of Virginia Beach is a really hard job, because, you know, some people think that I'm a mayor too, okay? Anyway, I am against Virginia Beach Travel Soccer. This is my 11th year coming here. I didn't bring anything, because I would need a truck, okay? For what my neighborhood's gone through with Virginia Beach Travel Soccer and what's there now. The reason I'm opposing, I don't oppose that they're going to be there. There's room on Holland Road. If they feel a need, because they have to be near the other soccer field or their home office on Holland and Dam Neck, that's fine with me. But to put it on Buckner, a road that was approved to get the emergency vehicles to our neighborhoods, Astor and New Hospital, in fact, we're, we've got a shopping center coming. The hospital was actually supposed to go there on Holland and Warwick Drive, if y'all remember. Asia Town, all this. We do not have a problem with this. We don't have any problem with development. We are development. My neighborhood was the first one there. We pride ourselves that rescue can come. My neighborhood's getting, neighborhood's getting old. I'm old, I'm in my 70s, okay? I need, probably one of these days, I'm going to dig these people. We pride ourselves that we can get to the hospital in six minutes. We've timed them. To put 114 cars, like they're saying. And we know there's going to be more, because right now, the place in front of me has 180, supposed to have. They have 250, they're parking in the moose parking lot, they're parking across the street. They're not going to stop doing after 11 years. Now, you guys know I'm telling you the truth here, okay? You've invited me to be part of everything that happens in the city, okay? Ruth, you know, I'm sorry. I'm telling you the truth, and just please don't, please do not. I'm begging you. Do not. This road, it's not big enough for the ambulances to get through. We're doing fine. It opened, you know, I think 208 or something, and please do not, I beg you, do not clog this road up. They can, they can go somewhere else on Holland Road. I mean, there's, there's development. We're going to look like Glens Town. We're okay with that. We expect it. Now's the time for development on Holland.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate you coming down. Thank you. We'll have Mr. Bradon come address that issue, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. Eddie Bradon, Virginia Beach Attorney, represent Virginia Beach Travel Soccer, Beach FC, and its 5,500 members and 3,200 youth players. This is a piece of unconditional B2 property adjacent to the Walmart marketplace upon which any number of commercial activities can be done by right. The amount of traffic generated by that B2 property with a commercial development is about 10 times what this indoor-only youth practice facility will generate. The facility doesn't have peak hour traffic. It's generally bad weather months, late afternoon, i.e. 5:30, 6 o'clock till 8:30, 9 o'clock, and Saturday and Sunday. The traffic will be far better with this. Ms. Russell's referring to a different facility that they used to rent, that is down the street in front of Cardinal Estates, where Ms. Russell proudly lives, and she's done a great job with that neighborhood. But that has outdoor fields, indoor, it's a completely different situation. They don't, Beach FC doesn't rent that property anymore. It's a privately owned facility that another soccer club is the renter on. So the idea that this is going to create traffic problems is, just doesn't have any basis in fact. The, the other thing that, this is a floodplain variance, because there is a old farm ditch that runs across the property, and actually, when the marketplace developed, they should have had to get a floodplain variance as well, simply because our floodplain ordinance says if you disturb 5% of the floodplain on your site, no matter how minimus that may be, you have to get a floodplain variance. Then that wasn't, it was even missed, because there is no other floodplain on the Walmart marketplace site, and the floodplain on this site is this little part here that's not being touched, this here, and this lead ditch, which actually in the photo you can see that it's an old, is an old ditch, it's not even longer, but it's a low indentation, and that, and the requirement for access to the property comes across here, that's where the curb cut is, and there's a shared access with the Walmart marketplace, a part of the original development, that cuts across. This is our access, and we have to tie into their facility here, and that's the only disturbance. It's 550 cubic feet, it's very small, and we're mitigating it 120 percent, and all the mitigation is closer to the canal. It's on, on the appropriate side. There can be, there's not going to be any, any discernible measurable impact on flood storage capacity in the floodplain, and we've got all this open space. These trees are all being preserved, and all this open space in the front for stormwater BMPs. There is no variance to the, to the stormwater requirements, and this has to meet all the current stormwater requirements, and it will, unlike everything around us. And the Buckner Farms community, which is the only community that abuts this project, has absolutely no objection, and the adjacent neighbors are supportive of it, and there's been no objection.
Any questions of Mr. Bradon? Shannon?
Thank you, Eddie. Thank you, Linda, for coming out. I'm fine with this, and I move that we approve it.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of 10 to 1, you have adopted the Virginia Travel Soccer.
Will now move to appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate to the Virginia Beach Development Authority Mr. William Miller, to the--
Mr. Gerald Miller.
To the City Services Bill Affordability Ad hoc Committee Christopher W. Choak, Thomas Dillon, Jennifer K. Vaughn, Karen Mundin, Teresa Stanley.
And the number seven.
Number seven, Craig Coop, Leo Ortiz, Hugh Tierney, and Deputy City Manager, open over Public Utilities, Public Works and Management Services, Mr. Tom Leahy, and City Council Liaison, Shannon Kane, and--
I don't want to interrupt you, but on the economic development, you said William Miller. Is it Jerry Miller or--
I'm sorry, Jerry Miller. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Jerry Miller. Thank you very much.
Always there to help.
And if I may, counsel, we have several students who need to be appointed to the, to several different committees before the school goes out, so--
Please.
To the Human Rights Commission, Joseph Hyatt, to the Parks and Recreation Committee Commission, Braden Beckworth, junior at Tallwood High School, and Victoria Milson, senior at Prince Anne High School, to the Public Library Board, Charlotte, Dolumpa Alexander, junior at Ocean Lakes High School, and Jada Copeland, senior at Bayside High School, and I didn't mention it, to the Human Rights Commission, Joseph Hyatt, is a junior at the Salem High School.
Are those your nominations? Maury Hill for the--
Oh, all right. Thank you, Amelia. To the Open Space Advisory Committee, Maury Hill.
Do I hear any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have appointed those members named by the vice mayor.
I want abstaining on economic development, and my reason is I had to not get the advantage to review the economic disclosure statement of the applicant before the vote. I abstain on that appointment.
Thank you. Counsel, is there any unfinished business? Yes, ma'am.
We do have a scout.
Yes, and I'm going to recognize him at the end of the meeting. I've got one, one's coming up. Get a picture after the meeting. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Willa Jarnd? Willa Jarrett?